Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming to our meeting today. This is the June 2 Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll call it to order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the minutes from our meeting on Monday, May 19 as submitted.
Second. We have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Accounts payable.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims from May 21, 2025 through June 2, 2025 be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve accounts payable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Payroll.
Mr. President, I'd also like to recommend the payroll dated May 23, 2025 be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. All right, we have one ordinance.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We hear UZO Amendment Number 119, Ordinance 2025-19-CM.
Second.
Okay, petitioner.
Good morning. Amanda Esposito, APC staff. This amendment adds a new residential zoning district to the current 11 residential zones. It's called R1C, and this would be a bit of an urban development in suburban areas. So this is slightly smaller than R1B, slightly larger than R1U. The minimum lot area is 4,400 square feet. R1B is 6,000 square feet. So it is going to be significantly the smallest lot size for our suburban lots. APC did recommend approval of this, 13 to 0, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or oppose to this ordinance change?
Good morning. Sally Fahey. I would like to speak in favor of this ordinance. We have a serious housing problem in our community, and we seem to be fast becoming a community mostly for renters rather than homeowners. So any of these amendments to the zoning ordinance, like the town home, connected town homes just a little bit ago, and this ordinance make a lot of sense for people to be able to get into homeownership where they couldn't before. My only concern about not the ordinance but about the situation is that I think these and the town homes will also be attractive to investors, and I am a little concerned that we will have investors buying up these properties and then they will still be rentals rather than being available for homeownership. But this is a step, in my opinion, in the right direction to solving part of our housing issues.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak in favor or oppose to this ordinance? Not seeing anyone. Jennifer?
Murtal?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-19CM passes 3 to 0.
Okay, thank you. I have another ordinance.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We hear ordinance number 2025-20-CM, Moratorium on Large-Scale Solar Energy Systems, on first reading.
Second. Doug, you want to give us clip note?
Sure. The beginning of the ordinance walks through the various authority you have to adopt these types of ordinances. Home rule, regulating conduct or use of property in support of the health, safety, and welfare of the community, economic development. Cites there's a new law coming into effect, 1109.5, effective July 1, 2025, permitting the prohibition of siting, construction, installation, permitting, or deployment of projects for the generation of electricity. So you'll see in the meat of the ordinance some tracking of that language. It notes some of the community concerns that have arisen. It's not exhaustive, I don't think, but impact of construction on local infrastructure, impact of solar panels on drainage, runoff, and other health and environmental consequences of the activity, impact of the activity on the agricultural capacity of the county, inadequacy of plans for decommissioning. And then cites your need to have a moratorium on the review and development of such systems to give you a chance to balance the rights of property owners with the public health and safety of the community. It applies to large-scale solar energy systems. In your zoning, you have large scale, which is essentially 10 acres or more, for the purpose of selling wholesale or retail-generated electricity. You also have community scale, which is under 10 acres, and this does not apply to that. It also does not apply to building-mounted solar. And it applies for one year during which period no person shall site, construct, install, permit, or deploy large-scale solar energy systems, and the departments of the county won't accept applications for permits from parties seeking leave to site, construct, install, permit, or deploy such systems. And I should mention, this is first reading. Before you go on to second reading, I have a phrase in there, sort of, it's my mistake, from a template I used for other ordinances. It's the part that creates an exception, quote, "to the extent a jurisdiction has exempted itself." And where that comes from is sometimes we pass ordinances that apply to the whole county, incorporated and unincorporated, and when you do that, incorporated areas, sort of by right, have the ability to exempt themselves. And so that's why that language is in there when we do it that way. But we've written it so this only applies to unincorporated. Tifficnew County, the cities and towns can take care of themselves under this moratorium. So before we finish on second reading, if you move forward that far, we should get rid of that exception. I just didn't want people to think there was a exemption process that's really kind of a lucery since we don't have any incorporated areas that this applies to.
Okay, thank you, Doug. We will allow, please sign in if you would like to speak. We have a time limit of three minutes per person. So I'm going to start first with those who are in favor of this ordinance to go ahead for public comment.
Kenny McClary, 942 Chepstow Lane, West Lafayette, Indiana. Thank you, Commissioners, for the sensible and wise consideration today of the moratorium on large-scale solar facilities and to hit the pause button on considering any approvals of these huge utility-scale solar energy projects until such time that the appropriate guardrails, ordinance guardrails and considerations can be put in place to protect all involved. Landowners, we believe there are situations where landowners' rights need to be protected here under the, that are not addressed under the current ordinance structure. Adjacent property owners, environmental considerations, county infrastructure considerations, general health and safety for the public considerations, and many others, including economic impacts, negative economic impacts from these facilities. Much has changed since UZO 99 amendments were passed back in 2021. The emergence of very large-scale, multi-thousand-acre solar facilities is a recent phenomenon. We've seen many of the negative impacts of those facilities in our surrounding counties. In addition, the emergence of very large battery energy storage systems, or BES systems, have arisen, which are often related to these large solar and renewable facility complexes. Those BESS systems represent a new challenge from an emergency response, fire safety, facility siting, and proximity to occupied residences and public areas that must also be addressed as we take this moratorium pause. So we thank you for your efforts. I believe that we have many resources in this community with the expertise needed to come up with a better and improved set of ordinances and guardrails which will protect all that are involved in the county, and we look forward to working with you on making those improvements and changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Mike Andreoli, address 1393 West Oak Street in Zionsville, Indiana. I represent the large citizen group that is in opposition to the large solar array being, seeking approval to special exception in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I want to commend the Commissioners for taking this action today. You are not alone. Throughout the state of Indiana, we have seen in the last two years of proliferations of moratoriums that have been issued to cause them to take a pause and study these particular issues. Many of the ordinances in many of the counties in the state of Indiana did not have sufficient standards. Some had no standards at all. And so essentially what's been happening is they've been transitioning to try to study these issues to determine what standards they may seek to impose in order to cite these, if at all. And many of the, many of the counties have developed extremely strict standards to protect their constituents. And so we applaud your action today to take a, to take a pause. And I'm not going to say much else as I've submitted letters to you gentlemen with a number of articles. One of the things that concerns me is in the application itself of the current solar array that's being proposed is, and your, part of your definition suggests that these are being created in order to sell electrical supply. The bottom line is, there, one of the articles I sent you is that the RWE, the partner of Genex, has pulled the horns in on several of their, of their projects over the period of time because they cannot get the electrical, essentially clearinghouse, to be able to give them authority to connect to the grid. That is an extremely, extremely important thing and extremely important from the landowner's standpoint because if this was approved for any reason, whether it develops or not, the loss of property values are there and they're permanent. And so the, the ability to sell electricity and the ability to connect up to the grid is extremely important, and that, that should be done at the very beginning of this particular project so, so that everybody understands and knows, assuming it would be approved, that it would have a viable project that would actually connect up. That's the whole purpose of, of the solar array definition that you have in your ordinance is to be able to actually sell this electricity. And right now, we, there's no commitment by anybody to be able to go ahead and put this on the grid, and that's an extremely important issue that I hope eventually you consider and others consider in the county when you're revising some of your, your ordinances. Thank you.
Did you sign in? Did? Anyone else in favor of this ordinance?
Good morning. Kathryn Soborowski, 938 Chepstow Avenue. I would just say that I'm in favor of the moratorium. I think it's a good thing to do because, as others have mentioned, a lot has changed since you drafted an ordinance, you know, starting in 2020, working through 2021. And I think one thing to point out really is I do think that the county did a first good sort of attempt at putting together an ordinance on a relatively novel issue. But speaking from personal experience as an attorney not representing this group but just as someone who is legally educated, drafting laws is hard. You know, you don't always get it right the first time. Sometimes you need to go back and make little tweaks. And I think, you know, there are some people certainly that want really extreme changes to this ordinance, but even if you made not very extreme changes, you can look at what you have on the books today. There's a typo in it. Okay, oopsies, we'll fix that, right? But there are some other more technical things. We've got one application going through now, and we're seeing it's kind of hard to even understand how it works through the wickets of this ordinance. Do things need to happen right now before the BZA? Do they need to happen later at the ILP phase? So we get a chance, putting this moratorium in place, just to sort of fix the nuts and bolts to make sure it functions really smoothly using some of the good things that are already there, which is why I think that this is a great step to take right now. And it'll help the whole county because, as you've mentioned, there are developers out there looking for other places in the county to sort of do these projects. So it's not just about this one neighborhood that has a project maybe coming in, but it's really for the benefit of the entire community at large.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the ordinance?
She's a tough act to follow. My name's Victor Gervais. I live at 3286 Apple Lane, West Lafayette. And I apologize, I was, this is a picture of our house. I was going to get it up on a screen, but I didn't work it out with the IT folks. There it is. A couple of things. Been working with you Commissioners over the last few weeks, and I appreciate it. Met you, and something I never thought I would do or have to do, and I'm glad because it's a pleasure working with you. And you've been working with our group and listening to our concerns. You certainly know, but maybe there's some in the audience don't know, that a little over a week ago, the three of you came out with us and took a tour of this entire site for this solar project to visually see, you know, what it is that we're talking about and ramifications. And we appreciate that, you know, very much. And we certainly appreciate you putting the moratorium out and putting us on the agenda today because it's very important to us, you know, to keep this thing active and official and see what you can do to help us, which you've been very gracious in trying to help us. So the reason I brought this picture, which, there it is, folks, is these gentlemen on this, this tour, we had this driving tour, and they didn't have any choice, but I made them stop at our house and to look at it and say, you know, this is our house, and look across the street because this project would be immediately across the street. And they looked around and they could see exactly what our concerns are. My wife's sitting back here. Twenty years ago, we bought this nice lot in this beautiful place with this, this wonderful farmland across the street, and we would obviously like to keep it that way. So, so just a couple of things I wanted to say. Again, I want to thank you for all your cooperation in the future, wherever we're headed with this. So thank you for that. And one other thing is, I think everyone's familiar with, or I don't know, I'll just maybe don't assume that, but the solar array that Purdue put in, you know, a few years ago on 231. And so we took a ride by that yesterday just to, just to kind of look at it. And okay, there it is, you know, the, these giant panels, which are half the height of this room or, or, you know, something like that. And we're looking at it, and they've got these trees there, which this Genex is telling us they're going to put this beautiful stuff, you know, so that's, you know, so they'll, they'll hide whatever they're putting across the street from our house. And the trees are, that was one of my other pictures, which I can't get on a screen, but even Purdue is not my main, and this is Purdue with all of their, you know, millions and, you know, dollars of endowments and everything. They can't even maintain what they have there. And that's Purdue, and this is our community, and if they can't do it or won't do it, you know, what is this company going to do that's putting this stuff in? Hopefully, we don't get to that point, but that's one of our concerns if the project ever gets built. So thank you for listening to me.
Did you sign in?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Teresa Witkowski, and I am the proprietor and the owner of Black Blanket Farms, which is at the heart of the area, and have a bed and breakfast there, which we've had the health department come do inspections. It's all within the parameters of a properly established business. And I just wanted to support and notice, that you noticed we are on red today because we'd like to see stop the solar. And there's a lot of people, and I know there's a lot of letters of opposition that have been coming in, but as a business owner, it would be pretty devastating to the quietness and the peace and calm that people do come out to my bed and breakfast to stay. I opened it in 2018, and I've had over 3,000 guests, overnight guests. And I also thought, well, I've really had more than just overnight guests. And I started looking at reunions and weddings and special events and, and other groups that have been staying there. And I have another 3,000 people that have just come for the day to enjoy the, the atmosphere of an agricultural, agricultural area and peace and quiet. So I know there will be more information that you'll receive in another letter, so to speak, but I wanted to let you know that there are businesses out there in the, in the area, and I've lived there since 1964. Well, my, my family did. John Purdue used to have friends that lived there. There's a lot of historical references, which doesn't necessarily look at today's information that you need to know about, but as a business proprietor, it definitely would affect my business. So I thank you for your time and effort, and I will sign in. Thank you.
Tina gets mad at me if you don't sign in, so that's why I'm making sure you all sign in, okay? So you never want a lady to upset with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa. Anyone else in favor of the ordinance?
I'll keep this pretty short. Joe Soborowski, 938 Chepstow Lane. My wife Kathryn just spoke. I want to thank you and applaud you again for putting this on the agenda, definitely for it. And that's not to say we're anti-solar. I research sustainability. I understand renewables are important. They're part of our new source of energy. But the ordinance obviously needs revision, and a moratorium allows us to do that in a responsible manner. So again, I thank you. And I also wanted to highlight all the folks here that are wearing red. I didn't have red, so luckily I was given a bandana, that are here today in support of this moratorium. And if you would all stand, please, just to kind of give an idea. Not everybody wants to talk, but everybody is here in presence. So thank you all. Thank everybody here. Appreciate it.
Well, we hope we don't have a meeting like West Lafayette for six hours of talking. So we thank, thank you all.
Super short, concise. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Ayersman. I live at 441 Kerber Road in West Lafayette. David, your comment about six hours of talking, we're not done yet, but it won't be six hours. I just wanted to kind of, just kind of throw that out there. Again, to kind of reiterate what a lot of other people have said, we want, we thank you so much for taking the time and the effort to come out and visit and see what it is we're actually looking at, and thank you for the consideration of the moratorium, which I absolutely support. Thank you so much. We, I believe that we need to make sure that, just like everyone here has said, put some guardrails on this and kind of see where we're at. There's so many factors between drainage, land use waste, the economic factor of what happens when you take out the agriculture, and all the people to funnel down from that, that everyone's affected, the workers, the ag departments, the implement dealerships, and so forth, that are all going to be affected by this. And you may say, well, it's not that much on this particular aspect of it, but it's not the 700 acres that are actually under the panel. It's the 1,700 acres that are being affected by this. So it's all getting affected by this. And then the reciprocal from that can also be very devastating. So I appreciate you considering this, give time to kind of really put numbers on this and see what's actually going to happen once, if this gets approved and moves forward. And appreciate you taking the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Frye, and I live on Hoover Road, cata-cornered from the already station. And this morning, I heard, we, I had, we had the RFD channel on, and it was brought up that in Texas, there are problems with a solar panel situation. I don't know any of the details. All I know is it was on RFD this morning. And I am very concerned about our water. We get our water from underground. What is it going to do to that water? How is it going to affect? And our neighbors right behind us are not here this morning, but when you all did your tour, talked about the noise involved. Well, we're right there. We're here, they're here. And so I would appreciate some understanding and checking more and more to make sure on this because it's going to affect us in a lot of ways, I think, negatively. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of this ordinance? All right. Anyone opposed to the ordinance?
Ryan Mundon with RTS Law here on behalf of Rainbow Trout Solar LLC. It would be helpful to clarify, from your perspective, whether the intent is to apply this moratorium retroactively to the petition that has already been submitted by Rainbow Trout. It appears that the, the intent behind the ordinance is less about calling a pause and taking time to perfect our solar ordinance and more about being anti-Rainbow Trout and killing this project. It's unfortunate because I'd like to point out a few things, that our first meeting for this project was in October of 2022. Commissioner Byers, we met with you for the first time in August of '23. We have operated transparently through the process and based on the rules that we had and currently have. And we find ourselves three weeks away from a BZA meeting here talking about a moratorium to try to kill this project. As much as I love reading Dave Banger's articles, and if you don't already subscribe, I suggest you do because it's phenomenal, but I hate learning about my projects when I read his articles. And we learned about this moratorium for the first time on Friday. And we've been meeting for three years about this project and meeting with you guys. And we learned about this from, from Mr. Banger 72 hours ago. It's extremely unfortunate we find ourselves in this position, given the fact that we've been operating with the rules that we have, and given that it is apparent that the interest is not in coming up with a perfect solar ordinance, it's about killing this project. So with that, I would ask that you vote against the moratorium. Thank you.
I guess in defense, Ryan, we did meet with your client a few days before and give him a heads up that this potentially was coming. Anyone else against this moratorium?
Sally Fahey and Liz Solberg. We are here representing the League of Women Voters of Greater Lafayette Board of Directors. Liz is passing out our statement, and I will also read it into the record. The League of Women Voters of Greater Lafayette comes to you today with comments based on study and adoption of a position that supports renewable energy. The League commends you for having a thorough and excellent existing solar ordinance that deals with important issues such as deals with important issues such as proper management of stormwater runoff to protect neighboring properties and natural resources, use of native vegetation around and under panels to protect soil, promote pollinators, and preserve the rural landscape, appropriate setbacks and fencing, and a decommissioning plan with a surety bond requirement that includes a provision for increases every five years to account for inflation. With these and other good provisions, we believe there is no need for a moratorium and hope that concerns can be addressed within the content and timing provided by the existing ordinance. Thank you. Signed by Liz Solberg and myself, Sally Fahy, on behalf of representing the League of Women Voters of Greater Lafayette Board of Directors. Thank you.
Anyone else opposed to the ordinance?
Good morning. My name is Susan Schechter. I live at 1001 Ferry Street in Lafayette. I've been watching these things because I do have a very intense interest in protecting our livelihoods and our public safety from the impacts of a warming climate. If you've been watching the news, you'll see that there were storms that really negatively impacted a lot of people in our country and around the world. There's a heat wave in, on the other side of the earth right now. We're having these lovely temperatures, but other people are suffering. And actually, I'm going to pick my cherries earlier than I ever have. They're almost ready to pick. That's way earlier than I've ever picked them. So then I see this and it was, boy, at the last minute that we heard this. I was talking, fortunately, I happened to hear rumblings and I talked to one of the commissioners and, but didn't get word that there would actually be a moratorium being looked at at this meeting until very last, very last minute. Then I've heard also a lot of misinformation, people who are, oh, we can't have this because the water will be polluted. Well, guess what? That's just, that's just an odd thing to hear because, because when egg fields are in production, they have poison poured on them daily. The groundwater is so heavily impacted by that. And we're saying, these solar panels that are inert, I have solar panels on my business and I'll tell you what, they just sit there and the rain, you know, comes off like as if it were a roof. And our roofs probably, an asphalt roof probably puts more toxins up than these panels. I'm just like, and then I hear, oh, they're going to scrape off all the topsoil. That's not true. I heard that in a posting asking people to sign to support the moratorium, saying they're going to scrape off all the topsoil. That's, they're going to, they're going to plant native species. Native species develop the soils. They, year after year, put organic matter back in the soils. They're really great for the soils. And they're good for our native pollinators and for our native insects, our birds. So this could be a really great thing for the environment. And noise, what's this noise thing coming from? Solar panels are totally quiet. I tell you what, I have 48 solar panels on my roof and they are quiet. You know what's noisier? The pigeons are really noisy, but the solar panels are quiet. So I hear all this passion based on misinformation. And please, our commissioners need to use good information. You already did an ordinance. This is, as I've heard from the solar developer, this is, seems to be shut down renewables in Tippecanoe County. You've already done it with wind. Another thing I heard here was boogie band language. Oh, they're going to put in batteries. Batteries are going to light on fire. We got to have, you know, there's just a lot of misinformation around this. You did this ordinance based on good information. Don't back off now because we might actually be part of the solution. Thank you. And I'm writing my address and I'll be done.
Anyone else against the ordinance?
And here's a tender on a fantasy about solar that's vetted information. Please read it.
Good morning, commissioners. I hope that you're having a good morning. I came to voice my opposition to the moratorium. I believe at least one of you up here was a farmer and I want to say thank you. Your work makes my life more comfortable and more enjoyable, whether it's dairy that helps feed me, corn that turns into ethanol that helps get me in my car that got me here today, or solar which keeps my light on. I am grateful for my farmers. The people behind me have very valid concerns as property owners, but I've also heard a lot of false narratives about what solar farms are, just like I'm sure how you have heard a lot of false narratives about how bad dairy farming can be. Now, please, imagine if those individuals who peddled those false narratives had organized against you. I'm glad your work wasn't halted at the whims of your neighbors. I fully understand community members wanting guardrails for large developers, but they already have them and that's thanks to you. Commissioners, you wrote a damn good ordinance and I don't know why you're second guessing yourselves now. Thank you.
Could you state your name?
My name is Reed.
Jonathan Neal, 1001 Ferry Street, Lafayette. And so this moratorium deal just came up all of a sudden. And one of the things that I noticed about the moratorium is your moratorium has in it language that is misinformation about health and safety concerns. And that's one of the biggest problems that I'm hearing is that people who are opposing this are spreading misinformation. Where does this misinformation come from? A lot of it comes from big power companies like Duke Energy that have a lot of investment in coal plants, that are stranded assets, and from fossil fuel companies. And they put this misinformation out there to try to kill renewable energy projects that will hurt their bottom line. But these renewable energy projects, such as wind and solar, are the cheapest energy available. And as a rate payer, I'm all for less expensive energy. So the alternative to banning wind, like you've done, having these moratoriums on solar farms, which may turn into a permanent ban, I think that's what we're looking at. So alternatives there are coal plants, which are dirty, expensive energy that Dirty Duke likes, and also small nuclear reactors, which the state just passed legislation allowing them to put a small nuclear reactor on any site that currently has a power plant. And you don't have any say in that if they decide to do that. So number one is the misinformation. Number two is the tax revenue. We already saw our state legislature give huge tax breaks to landlords, very large landlords. They also gave property tax cuts. And so this is going to cut the amount of revenue available to local governments. And so you guys can make that up with a local income tax, which is probably coming. And so when you block projects like this, they're going to bring tax dollars, tax revenues into the county that pay for things like school buses that take your kids to school, snow plows that keep your roads plowed in the winter, road funds that keep your bridges safe and your potholes paved. So there are a lot of reasons not to put up a moratorium. I think you can allow these projects to go forward and really study what the negative impacts are. As far as decommissioning, on the internet, there's pictures of supposedly a solar farm that's been abandoned and it shows he smashed solar panels. Well, guess what? That was an area that was hit by a tornado. And the company that managed the solar farm cleaned up the damage from the tornadoes and replaced the solar panels. So that's the kind of misinformation that we're seeing here. So I would really hope that you would reconsider this moratorium and go ahead and further study it while allowing these projects to go through. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone. We'll call the discussion closed.
Commissioner?
You had your chance. Thank you. Okay. So the moratorium is before us. Doug, do you have any more clarifications you need to present or such?
I don't think so.
Okay. I guess I'll make my statement is, I don't see this as a ban. I see this as new technologies that have come to the table. I think there's still some holes that are there that need to be fixed. That's why I'm in favor of this moratorium. I'm not saying we're going to get rid of solar. I'm not. I'm just saying, let's fix the holes and get them going. So that's why I'll be voting in favor of it.
I would echo Dave's sentiment. It is, I know the ordinance has been on the books for a couple of years now. We've had an opportunity to look at what these systems are, once they're installed. And I think most of us would agree, all of us would agree, that we're in some ways better educated and have a different perspective now. And as Dave said, this is, this moratorium is for a fixed period of time. And I don't see an issue with opening something up for a very public discussion to make sure that we didn't miss something back in 2022, because it was, it was something that was on the horizon. It's not on the horizon now. You can drive, you can drive to communities and see these large arrays and I think it begs a second look. And like Dave said, I am not anti-solar. I think it has its place. I think we just need to do some more work and make sure that we haven't missed something in the process. So I will be supporting the moratorium.
So, and I can remember when we were talking about this in '22 and we were literally begging for public feedback on this. And unfortunately, we didn't get a ton. We did have a good group that worked on it. And I thought, as well, we had a very strong, good ordinance. Obviously, there was no, at that particular time, there was no project on the horizon. You know, there are some things that have been pointed out in the last week that I do think we need to work on in the ordinance and that, and defining buffer yards is clearly one of those things. It is not clearly defined within the current ordinance. So I do think we need to take a look on that. Whether that affects this particular project is, you know, I don't know. I would have to rely on legal counsel to advise on that particular issue itself. But I do think it is something that we do need to look at now that we have a, that projects are being discussed. I do, you know, I do feel, you know, and Mr. Mundon, I appreciate your comments, you know, but when, you know, when meetings first started, you know, we didn't, there was no project outlined, meaning they had not secured property. It was just a touch base kind of thing. And that was only after we had heard, you know, through the rumor mill, that there was a project going on and us reaching out in regard to that. And, you know, now we're hearing things about projects in the West Point area and the northern part of the county. So it is so much easier if project owners such as this come forward to start with versus, you know, working in the shadows until, until this type of thing is 100% complete. But, and obviously, this ordinance itself, we'll take, we'll have to take a second reading. So, you know, we will be talking about this again at the next meeting as well, but, you know, we, I think at this point, I will be supporting the ordinance as well.
And the review of the current slash new ordinance could be done sooner than a year. So it could be back to the table sooner possibilities. So once again, thank you for every one of you. We know how passionate you are and how you feel. It's, it's great to hear the pledge with a lot of people behind you speaking. So congratulations and thank you for taking time to come out here. Okay, Jennifer?
Brown?
Yes.
Murtah?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-20 CM passes 3 to 0 on first reading.
Okay, our second reading. Do you guys want to do it at our next meeting or wait till the first meeting in July?
Next meeting.
I would think we just put it on the next meeting.
Okay. So June 16th will be our second reading. Once again, thank you for everyone showing up.
This will not be nearly as interesting. First item we have is a We Off School Road reconstruction contract award. We recommend award of the contract to the low bidder, which was Milestone Contractors at the amount of $663,500 and then acceptance of their bid bond in a penal sum of 5%.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve this construction contract for $663,500 and the bid bond of a 5% bid bond. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Our second item is the acceptance of a warranty deed for County Road 500 East. It's parcel 11, which is Truck Country of Indiana. The amount of the purchase is $56,350.
So moved?
Second.
Motion to second to approve this warranty deed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That passes.
And our final item is closing out parcel 15 from the original Morehouse deed, Morehouse Road project. It's, this is an agreed motion for distribution, this parcel, number 15, Reed Clement LLC, went into eminent domain. There's been agreement to avoid trial. So there's a release of the $25,364 in court-deposited funds plus an additional $3,100 settlement.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Motion of second to approve this parcel 15, agreed motion. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Rebecca, Youth Services.
Good morning. I'm requesting that we eliminate an evidence-based program coordinator PAT 2 position to create an additional school-based youth liaison PAT 2 position. It's already gone through the Personnel Committee. It's a zero net change. It's a grant-funded position, and we find that the roles and the needs and the duties are really within the school-based youth liaison and not the evidence-based coordinator. So we need additional employee in that role.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We make these modifications, meaning eliminate the evidence-based program coordinator, which is a PAT 2, and create the school-based youth liaison, which is also a PAT 2.
Second. Motion of second to approve this position modifications. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Holinger. Dave?
Good morning. Dave Holinger from your probation department. Back in late part of May, we received from the Judicial Center of Indiana, Judicial Conference of Indiana, I'm sorry, the minimum salary statement for your probation officers for 2026. It matches the 2025 schedule almost to the penny. I'm asking that commissioners please accept the recommended 2026 minimum salary schedule yet attached to it what we were being paid last year. If that makes sense, so last year in 2025, we received 2% over the state minimum, which was the first time ever that it occurred. Thank you again. I'm recommending that the 2025 county-approved schedule plus 1% plus, I believe is a proposal for some additional stipend, perhaps? I think that was in discussion, that that be applied also to my full-time employees. Also, you were gracious enough to support my request for taking the beginning probation officers at the P0 level and the P1 level and employing them all up to a starting salary equivalent to a P2, which was a big jump. And we are starting to see an increase in qualified applicants coming in. Now, there for a while, we were actually having to close down part of our department because we just didn't have enough employees. So I'm asking for the commissioners to support. I believe it was outlined in Auditor Weston's email dated May 22 of 2025. Option number three and option number four. Or the other way to put it is if you support the minimum Judicial Conference of Indiana salary statement, we'll all take a step back about 3% in 2026. So hoping that that doesn't occur.
Okay. Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend the 2025 county-approved schedule plus 1% and then a 750 full-time stipend. Do you have regular part-time employees?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And $500 for regular part-time employees as a stipend, which is the same as we're recommending for all county employees. And then also the, making a recommendation to continue the starting salary at the two-year longevity level.
Second. Okay. We have a motion of second to approve, I want to say approve, recommend to the council, to officers, the probation officer's salary schedule as stated. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Interlocal cooperative agreement with City Bus in Carroll County. Is that you or?
I suppose. This version didn't go through me this time, but it's exactly the same as the other surrounding counties. There's a requirement for an interlocal agreement in order for City Bus to provide some extended services outside of Tippecanoe County.
I think this is the third, maybe fourth county we've done. Yeah. I'll make a motion. We approve this interlocal cooperation agreement with City Bus in Carroll County.
Second. Motion of second to approve this interlocal agreement. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. All right. Suppose we don't have Tony here for this chiller?
Oh, I can take care of this. This, the first, the next two are related. The first is to change the scope with heapy engineering on, they're doing the engineering for our chiller project for this building and the courthouse. What we're doing is adding Kerry Home into the scope of that. So this is a total contractual agreement in the amount of $77,300 for engineering and field observation.
That a motion?
Oh, that is a motion. Sorry.
Second. Okay. A motion of second to accept this change request as stated for Kerry Home. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. Another change order of Tecton.
Okay. Again, same project. This is just for construction management services through Tecton, and this is a change order in the amount of $0. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Should we frame that one?
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah.
Okay. We got a motion of second to approve this change order with, as stated, for the courthouse chillers. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. Appointment to Battleground Conservancy District Board of Directors.
Mr. President, I would move that we appoint Timothy Schooler to the vacant position with the Battleground Conservancy District.
Second.
Motion of second to approve this appointment. All in fair say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. Any unfinished or new business? Okay. Reports on file. We have one from the Building Commission and another one from Tippecanoe Energy Audit, which is a very nice, interesting report that we did on all our buildings. Those will be in the commissioner's office for the public viewing. Any public comment?
Susan Schechter, 1001 Ferry Street. I'm happy to hear that you're reviewing your requirements for businesses going in. I would hope that you would consider a moratorium on any new gas stations. I live across from, I live kitty-corner from a gas station. The properties, excuse me, the properties, the properties adjacent to that facility cannot be sold because they're contaminated with hydrocarbons that are cancer-causing chemicals. The lights disturb me at night. It's noisy. It's a focus for, for negative social interactions, drug sales. So I'm hoping that you will consider a, excuse me. I'll wait while you work.
While I take notes? You don't need to wait while I take notes.
Well, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
That you will, that you will consider, no, because I think it's good that you put conditions on new uses or uses of land. It does seem like there's a double standard here, that for renewable energy, you're right on it. I tell you what, yeah, don't want, don't want that here. But I've seen a lot of gas stations going in, and guess what? There are real consequences for people. I will attest to that. I've lived across from, from agricultural land before, and, and that's good and well. We're, we are accustomed to thinking that corn growing up and being cut down is a beautiful thing. But really, I think that is a privilege that, that, to live near a landscape you consider so beautiful. So, so let's, let's keep it in mind that, that people in the county who are having factories built near their homes, people that have gas stations going in near their homes, we, we all are, you know, taking a hit for progress, I guess you might say. So please consider tightening up the rules for gas stations. I, I think that's an important thing.
Any other public comment?
Kenny McClary, 942 Chepstow Lane, West Lafayette. Thank you for the action taken today, commissioners, with the first reading of the moratorium ordinance and hitting the pause button on large-scale solar project approvals to allow for some thoughtful and thorough consideration of the ordinance guardrails needed to protect everyone from potential harmful impacts of these facilities. Many other Indiana counties, as I've shared with you, have taken similar actions recently to allow the time needed to review and revise their ordinances to balance their land use needs, to protect prime farmland, to protect nearby homeowners, protect county infrastructure and environmentally sensitive areas, and to protect the property owners who may choose to have their land be leased. We believe there are opportunities in each and every one of those areas. Behind me today are many individuals who stand ready and willing with their expertise to help in that effort. Behind me today are farmers who understand how to preserve and improve precious topsoil, environmentalists who know that we need, what we need to do to protect fragile wildlife systems and important watersheds in this county, emergency responders who understand what we need to do to, to balance public safety concerns and fire risks from large-scale facilities like these. Behind me are experts who are, know how to perhaps better implement smart solar, projects that do not consume farmland, but utilize commercial and developed lands for that purpose. We see many examples of that around the county already today where smart solar has been employed. And there are a few old retired engineers behind me today here who might be able to help us understand some better ways to manage these large-scale production, or construction projects, the impacts they cause, to help us understand the kinds of operation and maintenance systems that are needed for such a large undertaking, large site decommissioning and the full scope of what is involved, soil remediation, and restoration of properties after they have come under industrial use. We do not lack the resources in this county to come up with better and more balanced ways to do smart solar and smart land use in Tippecanoe County. That's our pedigree, and we have now a process where we can pull those kinds of resources together to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Katherine Soborowski. I spoke earlier and signed in, but I sort of have a dumb question to start with. I'm trying to be a quick study on county government, but you voted three yes on the first reading, but second reading means this wouldn't have legal effect until later in the month, right?
Correct.
Okay. So then my question related to that is we know then on June 4th, Wednesday this week, we're teed up to go to the APC Executive Committee on the project that's on file right now. And I just sort of have two things about that. I know Mr. Brins has already sort of set out the procedure for that. We're going to have five minutes for the attorney, for the neighbors, and then five minutes for RTS on behalf of GNNX. The only thing I'd say in relation to that is, as I've been trying to be a quick study, I looked at 10 years' worth of meeting minutes for special exceptions in this county. The one sort of scenario that I found that was somewhat comparable to what's happening here is the mining project that was trying to go in in 2017. When that determination report went before the APC Executive Committee, they did take public comment before voting on it, beyond the scope of just two people getting up and speaking. So I know there are some people that, if time is allowed in that schedule, would appreciate that. I'd encourage it because it is something that was done on a similar project in the past. The second thing I would say related to that is what's happening in advance of that meeting is that a determination report is prepared by APC staff to inform the executive committee sort of the way forward. How do we make this determination? What's the recommendation? I looked at that determination report. I've read through the comprehensive plan, the volumes on Land Use Manual. The determination report that you have on file right now that anyone could go and look at talks about the first two pages of volume two of the Land Use Plan. It's the introduction section. It's the goals for the comprehensive plan. But if you go even one page further, what volume two of the Land Use Manual says is here is the analytical tool that you should use to apply these goals. It's an unbiased land use matrix decision-making model. When you go back to the Rogers Group mining project in 2017, the determination report used that land use matrix to talk about whether that would be a good use of the land or not. So I would submit to you that perhaps the determination report that you have right now for this project isn't quite as thorough as it should be yet. And I would encourage staff to take any time, you know, or extend the meeting on that to really do that full analysis set forth in the plan to make sure that we actually use the tools we have to analyze the project.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Ayersman. I live at 441 Kerber Road, West Lafayette. I do want to thank all of you for coming out about a week ago. We really appreciate your willingness to come out and look at the site. I want to speak to the short term or the notification. I received a letter, Greg and I received a letter, letter from Shelby Ruffner on or around, from GenX on or around May 20th in my mailbox. And I will tell you, that is the first official notification that I've ever received, and that is May 20th on or around. I responded to her on May 22nd of this year. So as a property owner that will directly face the solar installation, proposed solar installation, and it will practically touch my mailbox, I'm just speaking to, although they've been in the county for five years, if you're telling me since 2020, I've only been notified in 2025. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Sorry, I'm just writing my address.
If not, once again, I want to say thank you for everybody showing up. And as I've said before, I'm always glad we're all civil. So thank you all. So that a motion? Motion to adjourn. Me adjourn.
These are, that's yours?